We're gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Baldino?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Perstuk?
Here.
Mayor Tim Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Boils?
Here. Alright, we're gonna have the invocation led by Rabbi David Lisbon, who's here from the Jewish, Community Jewish Center. Thank you for being here again. And then we'll have Councilmember Giroux with the pledge of allegiance. All please rise.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Town officials, and good evening to all. May God Almighty bestow upon the leaders of this great town the wisdom and understanding to continue in the path of justice and goodness. Bless these individuals elected by the people in whom faith and confidence has been placed to legislate laws making decisions that will affect the lives of their citizens. Let them recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but a holy endeavor as well. We are approaching the holiday of Passover, also known as the season of our liberation, which comes around every year not merely to remind us of the liberation of our ancestors from Egyptian bondage, but also to inspire us to strive for greater measure of self-liberation from all limitations and distractions which impede from one's free exercise of good choice in the everyday life. In this blessed country of freedom and opportunity, such identification with the spirit of the season of our liberation pertains more to one's inner self than one's outer factors, which are often beyond one's control. Here, thank God, there are no external constraints or limitations to getting involved with charitable causes and communal affairs. It is only a matter of setting one's goals high enough to meet the challenges and opportunities of these times. Given the will and determination, the opportunities are limitless. Oh, Se Shalom, bim Romav, hu ya Se Shalom, alenu, vi akoyisur el, vi imru. Amen. May he who blesses, uh, may he who makes peace on high, may he bring peace upon us and upon all humanity. Let us all say together, amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, we've got, we've got some special presentations this evening. First up, we're gonna have Councilmember Perstuk announce the Run for Education proclamation.
Yes, I was very excited. So, the proclamation of the city of El Segundo, whereas the El Segundo Big Five PTA run for education was established thirty-two years ago to create a healthy and fun day for the community to come together and support public education. And whereas the PT, the Big Five PTA run for education is hosted by the El Segundo Council PTAs benefiting students attending all public schools in the district. The Run for Education has developed into the, into the council of PTA's largest fundraiser, welcoming over fifteen hundred participants from the community and surrounding areas to the streets of El Segundo to run, jog, or walk the USA Track and Field Certified 5K or 10K course, or kids' run-run through the town. And whereas, the funds raised from this event are used to support the wide range of students' needs, including technology requests, physical education equipment, departmental supplies, and college and career preparation programs, providing for unique student experiences, as well as supporting district parent education programs. And whereas, community support is the utmost importance with this event, relying on the El Segundo Police Department, City of El Segundo permits, our parents from all of our schools, high school students, volunteers, local businesses, and community members. And whereas, community partners play a critical role in the success of this event, we are fortunate to have Big Five Sporting Goods as the title sponsor of the run, along with the presenter, presenting sponsors Chevron and Lawa, Los Angeles World Airports, as well as the support of many local businesses who sponsor or participate in the event's Run Expo, and show your shirt, and save, promote. And whereas, the goal of the El Segundo Council PTA is to positively impact the lives of children and families serving its members and its community by providing opportunities and experiences to make El Segundo District the best it can be. Now, therefore, the mayor of, the mayor and the members of the City Council of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, as El Segundo Big Five PTA Run for Education in El Segundo, and encourage the citizens to take part in the thirty-second annual run. And tonight, we have, accepting this proclamation, is Tara Lee Gerson.
Would you like to say a few words, Tara? Who's gonna run? Who in the council's running? Come on, let's see some commitments. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it. No one's, come on. I'll be right there to cheer you on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, this pretty much says it all. Thank you so much for your support. I've done a lot of races in my time, and the City of El Segundo, hands down, gives the most support of any run that I've ever organized. So if you haven't registered, please register. Come out, enjoy. I know the cheerleaders will be there. Um, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a quick plug. It is a great race. It's a challenging one, too. El Segundo, one of the hilliest cities, if not the Guinness Book of World Records, isn't it? Like, the hilliest per square mile. It's a tough course. It's very challenging. It feels really good when you're running down Main Street at Library Park. So thanks for all your efforts. We'll see you out there. Hopefully, my knees can withstand the race. We'll see. Yeah, let's do a picture, please. Alright. Great. We'll step a little bit back, a little bit. Alright, just a couple of pictures. Here we go. One, two, and, a couple more. Beautiful, and, thank you so much. Alright, next up, Councilmember Baldino has a very special announcement.
Thank you, thank you. Um, several meetings ago, I made an announcement about an extraordinary individual in our town, and today, we're having an official proclamation from the city to acknowledge this young woman's accomplishments. Our own El Segundo High School junior, Alexandra Taylor, ran the LA Marathon, her first marathon, and she accomplished something that's absolutely incredible. She finished the marathon in under three hours with a time of two hours and fifty-six minutes and fifty-three seconds. She placed first in her age group and finished first in the women's open division. Truly remarkable, and we're happy that she's here today to receive our commendation and our congratulations. A true example of a city of champions. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations to Alexandria Taylor.
Thank you.
No pressure, no pressure.
Are you gonna be the pay center, pay center at the run for education?
Alright. Okay, here we go. One, two, and, and one more. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Even like, your camera's probably better than-
No, 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 no. Just get close enough so you can get it.
Wrong way. Thank you.
And just a note, she is gonna be, Alexandra's gonna be running the Boston Marathon, correct? Oh, Boston, oh yeah.
Registered, yeah, but yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Nice, well done.
Yeah, so if there's any company out there that wants their logo on her t-shirt, you know, please.
Alright, next up, Councilmember Giroux is going to announce the new national champions, the latest champions in El Segundo. Ah, like, the ladies are slaying it tonight, real nice. So, one of the things that, before I read this, is that it's unfortunate that people don't realize the level of athleticism it takes to do your sport. It is truly amazing for anybody to see. For those people who think this is a halftime show at the football game, they have absolutely no concept of what goes into it, from dance to gymnastics, eh, to, I mean, just the physi, the physicality of it is truly incredible. So, um, I'm gonna read it off, what I was, what I was given to read off. The congratulations to the El Segundo Youth Cheer Team on your incredible achievement in clinching not just one, but three national titles. Your hard work, dedication, and synchronized spirit have truly paid off, showcasing not only your exceptional talent, but also your unwavering commitment to excellence. Keep shining brightly as you continue to inspire others with your remarkable success. I'm gonna name off the, uh, the team here. Emily Baird, if you wanna stand up, if you're here, come on up. Lucy Barrandess, Myla Brewer, Leah Corcio, Lily Cummings, Gisele Dawson, Lila Freiberg, Kalen Frye, Peyton Goss, Lena Haddock, Catherine in Delicato French, London Jenkins, Zareen Khan, Gianna Lahane, Peyton Marcus, Juliette McPeck, Kennedy Rollins, Riley Sanchez Stewart, Maya Shobal, Malia Schwenn, Abigail Smith, Angela Tennant, Ella Vai, who I've known for an extraordinarily long time, I can't believe you're up here, head coach Kim in Delicato, assistant coach Jessica Hamilton, assistant coach Kylie O'Connor, AD Michelle Ranaga, AD May Shobal, Amy Tennant, and city coordinator Rosie Cummings. Congratulations. Coach, do you wanna add any comments to this incredible achievement from your girls?
Um, thank you so much for the recognition tonight, uh, from the City Council. We really appreciate it. Uh, I think it was very well said. Um, we're a lot more in what they put into cheers, a lot more than just the halftime. Um, and so this is a group of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We're looking forward to what they're gonna add as they move up from middle school into high school. Um, and I'm just so proud to be able to coach this group. They worked really hard, lots of support from parents, and also, thank you to the city. We use our local fields, our local elementary school for practice space, and we're very grateful for that opportunity to represent the city.
You guys want to be in the front line or the middle line?
I gotta try to get everybody in.
No pyremit, no flyer, no nothing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Alright, let's see here now. And then, parents, are you guys ready? You can come behind me after I take a couple. It's a big moment. Congratulations. Here we go, everybody. Alright. Couple more, and one more. Thank you so much. Now, stay there, guys. So, you can get a shot. Drew, I need you to smile.
Good job, girls. Good job, guys.
Outstanding. I think we've got announcements like this, of all these incredible things happening for the next foreseeable future. It's amazing what our town is doing. Alright, now's the time and place for public communication related to city business only. If you wanna talk about the public hearing items, which are items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, please hold your comments for those items. Otherwise, we'll take any and all public comments at this time. We'll limit the comments to five minutes per person. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes. First one is Chris Johnson.
Do I just start?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hey, uh, good evening, uh, city councilmen and women. This is the first time I've been to one of these, uh, meetings, and, uh, I've been in El Segundo for seven and a half years. I have three school-age kids. Um, love El Segundo, um, and hope to be here for a really long time. Six months ago, my aunt parked her vehicle in front of my house, uh, when she went away for a trip. The next morning, I was shocked to find that someone had broken into the vehicle and taken some things. Uh, since then, I've twice caught footage of doors being checked on automobiles in our driveway. Um, and then two weeks ago, twenty minutes after we left for a spring break trip, um, our alarm went off. I looked at our cameras to see people running out the front door, carrying our belongings, getting into a white Dodge Charger, and driving away. Um, luckily, the alarm tripped. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have found out about that until a neighbor reported that our front door was open. Forty-five minutes before that, we were dropping our son off at the middle school for the New York DC trip, and we left our two younger kids home for about thirty minutes. Um, and I'm just grateful that didn't happen while we were gone, 'cause I don't know what would've happened. This was at, this was a Saturday at about six PM daylight. Uh, as friends and neighbors heard about this story, uh, more and more stories emerged. Um, car windows being smashed, attempted car burglaries, um, or theft, I should say. Uh, another burglary the same day as mine, following the same pattern, which is going around the side gate, smashing into the glass panel on the rear French door of the house, ransacking the master bedroom, and running out the front door in less than three minutes. If you've never experienced anything like this, um, all I could tell you that it's violating to the, in a, and to a degree I've never experienced before, and I can't imagine, um, anything else really feeling that way. I've, since it's happened, I've experienced a great deal of paranoia, anx, anxiety, sleepless nights, and fear for my family's safety. Um, I'm no security expert, so I come with questions, not answers. Um, I wanna know what other cities are doing to combat this problem. Um, what does El Segundo Police Department need that maybe they aren't getting right now? Um, can we do some diligence around the flock camera system in use at Topgolf and the Point, um, for use in El Segundo residential areas? My understanding is that roughly a dozen cameras would increase entry and exit coverage to a hundred percent. Uh, so my concern is that criminals are emboldened because they can get away with it. So what can we do in El Segundo to prevent that?
Thank you for your comments. You haven't been here before, but the way it works, sir, is, uh, Mr. Johnson is, well, after public comments, we can debrief with the city manager about what we heard. Thank you very much for your comments, and we're sorry that that happened.
You're still in eight hundred East Mariposa, or seven hundred somewhere there?
Nine hundred East Mariposa, yeah. Maryland and Mariposa.
And it's perfect that our new police chief was in the audience hearing your, uh, description as well, too. He just joined us, um, literally, I think, seven days ago or something. So, thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted, it, it feels like if, unless the reputation gets out that El Segundo is a place not to be messed with, um, that they'll only grow more bold. And I know in sort of unincorporated parts of LA, this would not be pursued at all. So I'm grateful to live in El Segundo where I know it will be pursued. My concern is, um, that because they'll likely get a slap on the wrist if they're first-time offenders, that, and they got away with it essentially this time, they'll be emboldened, and we'll see this sort of crime escalate, as we previously saw with catalytic converters. Um, and yeah, just wanna set the reputation for El Segundo. Um, we're a small town, and we should be able to protect, uh, you know, have really good eyes on what's happening here, and send the message that we're not an easy target.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next one?
Todd Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
How you doing? Uh, I'm third generation El Segundo. My mom was born and raised here. Uh, my grandfather died in the line of duty, saved, El Segundo volunteer fireman, saving somebody's life at Standard Oil. Um, my daughter is the fourth generation, and she's born and raised and went to El Segundo schools, the greatest schools around. But I'm concerned with the, um, the flat rate for the, um, sewer system that we're getting charged, fifty-one something dollars every month. Um, LA Department of Water and Power, which I work at a lot of times, they, all their rates are rated by your water usage, 'cause if it's, you're using the water, it's going down the sewer. I pay nine, nine dollars a month for, or for two months for my water, yet I'm charged fifty-one dollars, or a hundred and two dollars for my flat rate. To me, it's wrong, and LA County bases your water uses and your sewer rates, has, there's a formula for that. And wondered, I, I don't know when we switched to this flat rate, but some of the people who are on fixed incomes, I think there's an issue there. And I know, I mean, in two months, I used three units of water, which isn't nothing. And, uh, nine dollar water charge, but I'm paying a hundred and two dollars for sewer. So, my water that's being used is not going- used is not going down the drain, so I was just hoping that we could maybe do something about this, or, I know saw a lot of these people who have moved into town, we've lived here since, owned this house since nineteen forty-five, and, you know, just, I've seen all, I don't remember back in the sixties, we're paying for water and sewer, I know that everybody does, but I know LA Department of Water and Power, they got sued for just an overage of winter water rates and summer water rates, just for that, and to be, charged a flat rate for something you're not using, or it should be like, there should be a scale, and I'm wishing we could go back to that, I don't know when it changed, I think it's been like five years now, but I was just hoping we could do away with some of the other people who are less fortunate, or on a fixed income, at least the older couples in town, I'm not myself, I'm still working at sixty-seven years old, but I wish there was something we could do about it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any other comment cards? No. Okay, Mr. George, you got a couple, I think the sewer change probably happened before your time, but.
Yes, absolutely. How much time do we have for that? I'll talk a little bit.
We'll have to talk a little bit about that, he's dead on.
Well, I will, for Mr. Wilson, yes, I'd like to chat with our Public Works Director about that and get back to you on issues that, okay.
If I could chime in, there's two things, one, that matrix was a result of some litigation, we had to go away from the matrix, it was based on the different uses of the water, but the other piece is, because you are west of PCH, we're at the City of LA's sanitation, we're at their mercy as a pass-through agency, so when they jacked the rates by ninety-one percent three years ago, based on bad flow-through data, the money that we're still trying to recover from them, it is, you are a hundred percent right, I think we a hundred percent agree, and we definitely want our money back, but that's a rate setting, it's a rate setting that we do not have power over, well, we have power over, but as a pass-through entity, because we are being billed, we're at the mercy of that administration and their bad data.
Oh, in that case, close the doors! Shut it off, secure the portals, secure the portals!
Like I said, I learned my trade from Standard Oil, went right to work with my father, my grandmother, my mother worked with them their whole lives.
You worked for pumps at Hyperion, perfect.
Treats me a good training that I've been able to sustain in my family with, so, yeah, born and raised here and love this town, and always will.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and then, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, regarding, I did take Mr. Johnson's phone number, we'll follow up with you and our police chief to discuss the situation, very sorry for what happened.
Well, also, we have a recurring public safety meeting, we just had a brand-new chief, the whole catalyst for that meeting is to explore new technologies like Flock, first response drones, anything we can do to continue to innovate around public safety, we've discussed all these ideas, we'll continue to do them, we're not opposed to additional camera technologies, generally speaking, up here, and the other thing I'll say is that we did add a whole nother beat, a whole nother patrol to this city not too long ago, which was an increase in our general operating expenses as a city, and we've asked the police chief on several occasions, what do you need, given what's happened, not only with crime, but also Prop forty-seven, the ability to actually prosecute people, which, by the way, there's a big election coming up, and I know I can't campaign, but there's a big election for district attorney coming up, which is part of that equation, but if there's anything else that you want to weigh on, weigh in on, Darryl, related to this?
Can I add one thing? So, interestingly enough, you know, you said about, let people know that we will prosecute, you know, when I was driving down the freeway, and I was heading into Orange County, there was this big billboard that says, "In Orange County, we prosecute," and so, you know, why couldn't we put up signs, you know, as you're leaving LA City, you're entering El Segundo, "We prosecute." I know it sounds cheesy, but if that's something we need to put out there, but, you know, it's kind of like when you put up the sign that says, "Beware of Dog," with the big teeth, you know, it does.
It's a great idea, the problem is, when we met with Gascon, Chris, myself, and, Darryl, was that you at the time?
Yes.
Yeah, and our chief of police, "We're not prosecuting," that's the problem, is that that message isn't consistent with the county, unfortunately, and when the previous chief, Jaime Bermudez, said, "Just help us prosecute further with these particular cases where we know they're repeat offenders, and they're going to these gang-related, whatever," even in that situation, we didn't really get the support that we needed, so.
Not at all.
It's, I can also say that there's a lot of momentum to reform Prop forty-seven happening right now, there, I just got a phone call today from one of our colleagues in Lamita, Longdale Bernard Suarez, who's helping with a ballot measure, there's legislation being proposed in Sacramento, because people are realizing that we've gone way too far in terms of not enforcing crimes. Is there anything else to, so?
Instead of, instead of, "We don't, we will prosecute," maybe something else, "We are watching you, we are, you know, we've got cameras," just some type of signage that says, "You're leaving, you're entering El Segundo, you're leaving LA City, we operate differently."
Yeah, I'm talking.
Most people know that.
No, I know, but maybe not, you know, you got a lot of new people in town, or not town, but new people to the state, maybe they don't know that.
Well, I guess it would be as good a time as any to introduce our new police chief, I know that I've introduced him to each of you, but, welcome to the community, Chief Sal Rodriguez, has been with us for now about a week, I think, and.
Ten days.
Ten days?
Ten days, sir.
So, I just, our new police chief comes from the city of Santa Monica, longtime, successful record in the city of Santa Monica, chief?
Well, first of all, good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, and council, I'd like to thank city manager Darryl George for giving me this great opportunity, I'm fortunate to work for such a fabulous city, I look forward to working with everyone here, and I look forward to meeting this wonderful community, the small-town feel is something that drew me here, I have a lot to offer in the sense of what you talked about, when you talked about technology and things that will get us ready for the future, things that will make our city safe, I look forward to doing everything I can to make sure that the men and women continue to make the city proud, make you proud, and make everyone happy for the best police department you have in the entire country, that's my goal, that you go, wherever you go, you say we have the police, best police department in the entire country, that is my passion, and I'm grateful to be here, and thank you once again for giving me this opportunity to work for this great city, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, just to.
While we're talking about crime, really quickly, because, not that there's a direct, but one of the other issues that we've been talking about from a public safety standpoint is homelessness, and when we clarified, Mr. George, your, what your priorities are, specifically performance, one of the criterions is, how many times are we interacting with homeless in the city through agencies?
Correct.
And how, what are the outcomes of those?
Yes.
And so, that is also a very significant focal point for us in the city over the next twelve months or so.
Yes, absolutely, I'll be working with both the police and fire departments on developing situations where we can track that and report back to you on a regular basis, so we'll be engaging with that very soon, and also, we're actually bringing a presentation on our efforts so far and into the future regarding homelessness, the next council, next month's, one of the meetings for next month. Two business items, mayor and council, if you, would you please consider, I'd like to pull item fifteen from the consent calendar and bring that back at a later meeting, which is the purchase of a fire command vehicle, and then also, if you consider moving E-21, the aquatic subcommittee update, to maybe after you consider the consent calendar?
Anyone oppose that?
No, but I'd ask, can we do fifteen during the budget analysis? Is there any reason why we're going to pull that out from all the other budget discussions?
Good point.
Because we're talking about appropriations for a specific unit?
Yes.
Right, so I think it makes sense to talk about it as the overall budget, if we could.
You mean at the budget workshop?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's a great idea. That's good, that's a great idea, we'll do that.
Can, Mr. George, just given what happened yesterday, can you talk about Hyperion really quickly?
Yes, I will.
I know we've gone away from the regular.
I don't want to torture fifteen, but because we would have to authorize appropriation from one fund to another, I think that we do have to vote on it at some point, is that, I could be wrong.
It's only because it wasn't in the budget, I think.
But we have to move from a developer impact fee to.
But we could vote after the workshop as well, yeah, thank you.
Totally fine.
Yes, I can do a quick Hyperion report, thank you, mayor. Yeah, actually, first and foremost, the, I know there's been, we've received some calls regarding an uptick again in odors out at the site, and we did discover earlier today that there was a leak at one of the digesters, which Hyperion staff discovered earlier this morning, the leak caused sludge to be exposed, and thus created the odor nuisance, they're in the process of fixing the leak, and undertaking cleanup, probably as we speak this evening, they think they can fix the leak and clean it up by later tonight, so that's, we at least were able to find the cause of the odor.
Is that, was that digester leak a result of some kind of capital improvement project, or is this just a regular occurring issue?
Yeah, I think.
It's an accident, it was an accident.
Accident like an angry air accident?
No, well, the system, system that sometimes it doesn't work like it's supposed to, so it was a system accident, and they wouldn't elaborate on that.
It was truly, it was truly remarkable this morning.
That's the motto of Hyperion, a system that doesn't work the way it's supposed to.
Can we, can, Mr. George, about putting Mr. Wilson on the stand, because I know he works for us, can we, can we dig into that a little bit further with staff?
Yes, we absolutely will.
Because it would be good if we keep having these somewhat systemic issues and others.
This is a different, this is a different cause, this, the leak in one of the digesters, the first time we've heard this particular item that's causing the odor, so we will get additional information on that. As you know, we've been back and forth with Mayor Bass and her Public Works Director regarding a number of changes to management and the organization at Hyperion, how the plant is run. We're at the point now where, in fact, yesterday, the Public Works Director and I had a long call with Ryan Jackson, who's the Public Works Director, about, they're in the process now of creating this new position, as I shared with you last meeting, we are now actually helping them draft the job description for this position, which will, which we've conveyed a very significant amount of qualifications and knowledge of the plant, issues related directly to odors, to communication, so forth and so on, they've been very receptive of taking our feedback, they're in the process now of hiring a recruiting company, who they've put us in touch with, so we'll have direct contact with the recruiter, and then we will actually be able to sit on the interview panel to hire this new person who will have a, you know, an engineering license, and fully understands what it takes to run a treatment, wastewater treatment plant. And then finally.
Did they, did they provide us with the communications process flow that we've asked for as well, with the county health?
No, not at this point.
Can we please make sure we get that?
We will.
Because here's an example of, if we knew the communication process, we could understand how that communication flows, just by chance, you got the call today, but we really need to have an understanding of how that communication process flow goes to us, as well as the county health, so that our residents know how that communication process flows.
Okay. And then, finally, regarding AQMD, they had a total of thirty-one complaints in the last two weeks, none of those rose to a notice of violation issued, or a notice of violation was issued, and so far today, they actually responded to twenty-three additional complaints, so this, these, these digesters really have been a problem.
Okay, I know we've gone away from the Hyperion updates, but maybe we want to add that back to the agenda for the next, so we can get an update on this.
Sure, we may have to go back to those, I thought we'd be okay for a while, but it sounds like we may have to go back.
Yeah.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, all right. Item A, read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only, if you could please state your name when you make the motion, because Madam Clerk Weaver is actually in video, taking minutes as well.
Persick, so moved.
Baldino seconds. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Consent, we have item fifteen, are there any other pulls?
Number seven.
Fifteen's going to be removed?
Seven? I need to pull the meeting minutes on number four to make a correction.
Okay. Any other pulls? I won't pull six, I'll just ask you about that later, Elias, can I pull number fourteen? You betcha. All right, any other pulls?
Copiers.
Do we have a motion to approve items five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Jeru, so moved.
Thank you.
Persick, second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. All right, item four.
Yeah, on page nineteen of four forty-one, there is the discussion of the downtown outdoor dining plan, the mayor and Councilman Perschek had to recuse, but it states that there was a motion made by member Perschek, seconded by member Jeru, so I think that's an error.
The other was Pimentel, not Perschek.
That would be Pimentel, so, with that one change, I'll go ahead and ask for approval of item four, the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Pimentel, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Great, item seven.
Yeah, I want to pull number seven, which is the amendment to the contract with Downstream Services Inc. for on-call pump station repair services, the reason why I wanted to pull this is, you know, Elias, I've been talking about that pump station for a while, and here's an example of why you really need to invest in your capital improvement, and, you know, these are antiquated pumps that aren't able to sustain the water flow that we're getting with the new rains, so my question, and I know that we've gone for, out for grant with Ted Lu's office, and it's two point five million dollars, so my question is, is it really worth our while to put the two hundred thousand dollars in, or should we go into our reserves to move forward with the new pumps, knowing that the rainfall in Southern California has changed over the last couple of years in anticipation, so I just, you know, I just don't want to throw bad money, or good money at bad things, and so if we know that we're going to be doing this, should we be moving forward with the construction of the, or the implementation of the new pumps, rather than putting money into repairs?
So, my response is, we still need to go forward, my recommendation is with the repairs, and I'll tell you why, because by the time we get the full design for updating the pump station and implement it, it may be two, three years away, we already have included that in the, not this year, but the following year CIP, we are pursuing all the grants, and frankly, yours truly, want to make sure that the site is emptied anytime we have rain, and be able to utilize the site for different ballgames, and then another reason is, if we manage, and say for sake of argument, if we end up putting a new pump, that new pump could be salvaged as part of the long-range plan for updating the station, in other words, the money will not necessarily be throwaway money.
And then, do we, should we be looking at escalating that pump replacement and not wait two years, at least move forward sooner than later on the design component?
The design is, as I am speaking with you, we already initiated the design with a consulting firm, he's already been on the job site, and we are working on getting the permanent, or rather, long-range upgrading of the pump station, that pump station, both the engines and pumps are old, particularly the engines, are very hard to find the parts, so we already initiated the design, but again, by the time we get the design finalized and make it part of the CIP, or get the grants, it'll be a little bit away, and the reason I'm concerned is, right now, we're utilizing auxiliary pumps to drain the site, and there are homes across from the pump station, and we got very close last time to get the water into the people's garage, and we don't want to, we don't want to risk any flooding, frankly.
All right, so I move forward to, I have moved to approve item number seven?
Thank you.
Baldino seconds. All right, Perschek on the first, Baldino on the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you, Councilor Perschek, item fourteen.
Agreement with Sharp Business Systems to provide copier equipment, supplies, maintenance, and support, this was, the last contract came up, I think, one of the first things that I was elected and it came up, and I'm dismayed that six years later, we are still spending more than a quarter million dollars on copiers, we've, in that time, spent nearly a million and a half dollars on digitization, so, a little of my question is, do we really need four hundred thousand dollars worth of copying, is there a state mandate that we have paper copies of things that we are trying to maintain, otherwise, I mean, this to me feels like we might as well have fax machines and telex, I mean, four hundred thousand dollars, or three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of copy machine seems, at best, archaic. Tell me more.
Good evening, mayor and city council members, at the beginning of this process, which started about eight months ago, we knew that our five-year Kiocera lease contract was going to expire, which had expired on April first, so we're now in a month-to-month status. So we're, we're now in a month-to-month status. Uh, my outreach to each department was I provided them with a summary of copiers in their department. I also provided them with a summary of number of copies that we have overall as a city and by copier. And my outreach to each department was, what are your needs? What can we pull back? Do you need any more printers or copiers? And the feedback that I received was, let's hold the line. We don't want any more copiers, but we want to keep what we currently have in place. So the copiers that were submitted in the bid and that we're bringing to you today are the quantity that we currently have today, and that's 27. That makes up 21 full big copiers and six smaller will be called desktop copiers.
That's effectively one copier for every 10 employees.
That is the, the feedback that I received from departments. I'm.
I mean, so we have the same number of copiers and that we did five years ago. To me seemed, I mean, it's quiet, am I the only, does that feel crazy? You're on a roll, I didn't want to stop you.
I can't tell you, we continue our digital push to get out of the paper business. We're going to be implementing DocuSign later this year. That's going to significantly cut down on the number of copies that we depend on.
I mean, don't rush into anything.
But.
Should we just buy copiers? Because I can't imagine that we're going to renew these five years from now. Well, maybe we will.
Four years.
Well, if, if we're going to be going into a DocuSign in, in the next few months, should we just delay this new rollout until we have that DocuSign in place and determine if we really need? I mean, you're, you're, you want to create a, I don't want to do a contract that is going to be defunct in a couple of months because we just implemented a new system. Plus, you know, we have the new, so not only are we doing the DocuSign, we have the new ERP system, which also to streamline some of our need to print because there'll be a lot more, um, pass, like processing.
It's all workflow.
Flow workflow options within that system. So my recommendation would be to kind of hold off or maybe, you know, try to limit, like reduce and then see how much pain. Because a lot of times, if you ask people, do you really need this? Yeah, I needed, I didn't. But if you just, maybe we say, well, do you really need it? And reduce, and then we can always add more, but you just can't take less.
Yeah, and one of the items that we're trying to mitigate is that we are at the end of a five-year lease with Kiosera. They want those leased copiers back. So we do need to either, one path was to renew with them. We wanted more of an inclusive approach with staff, so we decided to do an RFP. And that's why we're proposing to you Sharp. Um, but we do now have to make a decision on, Kiosera wants those devices back just because the lease is up.
But if, I mean, it's, is it easy, it's easier to add, it's kind of like when you buy the food plan at, at college. I always tell people, buy the least amount of food plan because then when your kid eats there and then they, you realize they only eat a couple of times a day, you can always, you can always go up, but you can't go down. It's kind of same thing with copiers, right? Like if you say we're going to only lease 20, then you can always add more, but, but reducing is harder.
Yeah, you know, we are at the end of a five-year lease, just like any device. The amount of maintenance that these things are requiring, the number of service calls, police, which is PD records, they're the highest user of these machines. They're making calls to Kiosera quite often and it's impacting a lot of those, that workflow that they do on a day-to-day basis. So if we do stay, I'm not sure how we would mitigate the fact that the lease has expired, Kiosera's knocking on our door wanting those machines back. This is an attempt to replace those machines that are.
City manager.
Yeah, you know, maybe, well, I know there's, in talking with Jose through this process.
Twenty-seven.
I, I know. Well, I know there's three departments, I believe, that are pretty essential. Police, community development, the city clerk.
That's 24 left.
City clerk is not in this.
Okay. So if I can go back.
So city clerk's not even in there.
If I can go back with our IT director, talk about.
This does not include the cop, the clerks?
No.
They have their own budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you go back?
Let me go back with the, with the IT director, look at the departments that need the printers, copiers.
Can we approve something tonight so not to exceed X amount of dollars and then, or you have to?
Let me just state, let me just state that staff has gone through a whole RFP process to get to where we are tonight as far as asking for requests for proposals, doing it in a public fashion that you want a city to do. I don't begrudge staff for needing copiers.
I'm not going to be walked to the end of a plank if we waited an RFP till one contract expired to buy $300,000 worth of copiers in 2024. This is crazy.
If I could just highlight one item, just it might make it a little bit more palpable here is, uh, the, the month-to-month or overall price is going to be lower than what we're currently paying now to Kiosera. So the overall price monthly is going down by $1,800.
I would hope so, they are selling copiers in 2024.
Yeah.
I mean, they'd take whatever they can get, well, they could Betamax players too. I mean, like, we should allocate 50 grand to just buy a couple of copiers and ride them to the sunset. This is, I think, I agree with Chris, I think there's an opportunity here. I mean, if you think about mortgages, really complicated title companies, legal agreements, everything now is DocuSign, like every industry. Um, I, I gotta believe there's some opportunity here to cut some of the hardware we have and the leasing responsibilities that we have. It would be nice to go back and just really assess rather than just, do we still need what we have? Is there another way to do things, frankly?
All right, we, we will go, go back. We'll have to figure out what we're going to do in the interim. We've got two-month window here that we've got to figure out what to do. But we will come back and look at each and every copier and come back and maybe we can consolidate some of the departments and bring that number down. If that's the wish of the council.
I, I don't want to, I didn't mean to put you up here to throw things.
I mean, if we have, I think, I think we should be formal here. If someone wants to make a motion to approve, we can do a vote. Let's, does anyone want to move approval?
I would move approval and give staff the resources they need to do their job and deliver customer service. I make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilor Baldino, is there a second? Okay, if you guys could come back, thank you for that, Ryan. Uh, we come back with something different, that'd be great, thank you. All right, consent is done. We are on to, we're going to go, we're going to move that item up. Uh, Ms. Gant, thank you for being here. We're going to go to item 21, which is the Aquatics Subcommittee update, please.
Good evening, council, staff. I have a very brief update for you, um, about the Aquatics Subcommittee. So as you guys probably already know, we meet the third Monday of each month at 10:00 AM. Members include myself, Director Mancini, Councilman, Councilmember Drew, Kelly Watson, Lee Davis, Joe, Joe Lormins, and Lanaya Palmer. Um, some of the recent accomplishments of the Subcommittee is the plunge design and approval, which is very exciting. Um, we have reviewed and updated the user group success criteria. Uh, and then also fee increases, which I believe have been presented to you all and will go into effect July 1st. Um, some of our goals for the coming months would be to finish our lane allocation policy, which will help provide guidelines for staff on how they'll allocate lanes to user groups, city programs, and, um, any users so that it's a transparent process that has specific, um, measures for priorities. Um, also exciting, we are waiting anxiously to hire an aquatics manager. So hopefully that's coming soon. And I will plug shamelessly for a recreation manager, that should be right around the corner as well. Um, and then also work together to develop business plan for the plunge and aquatics as a division, if you will. So that's just a really, really brief update. I'm happy to help or answer any questions you guys may have, feedback.
Um, first, thank you for all the time you put in this. And for those who don't know, can you tell us a little bit about your, your professional background and what you bring to the table?
Sure, thank you. Um, so I am currently the Community Recreation Manager for the City of Santa Monica. Um, I have a bachelor's and master's degree in Recreation Administration. I've grown up in recreation, working at swim pools, including the plunge, which is where I got my start, actually as a locker room attendant. Moved my way all the way up, I worked for El Segundo, Carlsbad, Coronado, and again now City of Santa Monica.
Well, thank you for using your expertise and skill to make our city better, I appreciate it.
It's my pleasure, I love, I love it. I love El Segundo and I'm happy to help in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gant, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. We're on to item 16, which is a public hearing. This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing regarding a resolution to previously certified general plan environmental impact report and ordinance for general plan amendment, zone change, and zone text amendment for the implementation of Housing Element Program Number Six, Provision of Adequate Sites, and Program Number Nine, El Segundo Municipal Code Amendments to increase the allowable density and adopt new objective development standards in the R3 Zone and Housing Element Sites, inventory sites. City clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All right, public hearing is now open. Mr. George, I assume Mr. Allen will make his presentation.
Yes, our community development director, Michael Allen, will, will start this item off and then the rest of his staff will continue.
Thank you, Mr. George. City Council, here. The item before you tonight is, is a long time coming, about two and a half years in the making. Um, so we're, we're, we're happy to be here tonight to get us, start, you know, across the finish line on adopting a, a increased zoning density in the overlay zones, which Paul Samaras will, will discuss and then provide a high-level overview for, for council tonight. Um, and introduce several items that the state has asked for in implementing zone text amendments or cleanup language that Paul will also go over tonight. So I'm going to hand it over to Paul, but Eduardo, our planning manager, and I are also here to, to answer any questions. Um, before we get started, I just want to, you know, really thank Paul and Eduardo and staff and the Planning Commission who, who have spent the better part of the last two and a half years participating in study sessions, developing objective standards, vetting these sites and, and the policy recommendations that are coming before you tonight. So thank you, Paul, thank you, Eduardo, and, and to the, the Planning Commission as well. Um, and with that, I'll hand it over to Paul and then we'll be here for questions.
All right, good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, the item before you is, as Michael said, part of our continued efforts to implement the city's housing element. As you know, the housing element contains 11 separate programs and we have made significant progress on each of these programs. Uh, just last month, we gave you a detailed update on our progress in implementing the housing element before we sent our annual report to the state. Uh, however, the focus tonight is on the two highlighted, um, programs, Number Six, Provision of Adequate Sites, and Number Nine, El Segundo Municipal Code Amendments. So starting with program number six, um, this one has five individual objectives. Uh, we've made progress on the first and the fifth objective separately, but the focus in this item is objectives two through four. Uh, creating two overlay districts that will permit higher-density residential developments, establishing development and design standards for projects in these new districts, and providing an incentive for inclusion of affordable units in these new overlay districts. As you know, for the period between 2021 and 2029, the city needs to facilitate construction of 529 units, including 390 below-market rate units, affordable units, that is our RENA requirement. 29 of the affordable units and practically all of our market rate units were addressed with the approval of the Pacific Commons Specific Plan Project. The proposed rezoning and establishing these new overlays will help address sort of the rest of the RENA requirement. And going into the specific districts, um, this map shows the MU or Mixed Use Overlay that is proposed, that involves four specific sites, three along Pacific Coast Highway and one in the Smoky Hollow area. Uh, the proposed density for this overlay is 75 dwelling units per acre. And, uh, this district has the potential at that density to generate, uh, over 300 new units over the, um, planning period.
Paul, that's over all four sites?
Pardon me?
You're saying that's over all four sites?
Over all four sites, yes. Uh, the second overlay is the housing overlay, which is proposed on properties that are currently zoned R3. It contains five, uh, sites. The proposed density for this overlay is 65 dwelling units per acre. And it's anticipated that at these five sites over the, uh, planning period, there could be, uh, around 200 more residential units produced. Uh, this proposed housing overlay is smaller than the housing overlay contemplated and studied in the housing element. Uh, I'll show you a, a slide of that here in a second. However, these individual sites, in combination with the mixed-use overlay sites, are sufficient to meet our minimum RENA requirements. This slide shows the housing overlay as was depicted in the adopted housing element. If in the next few years, for any reason, we determine that we're behind schedule in meeting our RENA goals, it is possible that we can go back and select additional sites from these areas that were already analyzed in the housing element. Now, as I mentioned earlier, along with the two overlays and the selection of sites, the proposed amendments include new development and design standards. Uh, we mentioned the proposed densities in the previous slides. However, for those densities to be feasible, um, the other development standards on those sites have to adjust or change to facilitate it. So for example, um, height and parking standards are proposed to be relaxed for those sites in the proposed overlay districts. Uh, so in the MU or Mixed Use Overlay, the height increases to 52 to 58 feet. And parking is reduced somewhat to accommodate for smaller one-bedroom studio-type units. In addition, some of the proposed standards have a specific design purpose to help ensure that these new developments and the additional height are compatible in that neighborhood context. Uh, for example, the top level is required to be, uh, smaller, 70% small, 70% at the maximum of the floors below. So, um, this district would allow up to four levels potentially. So that fourth level would have to be no more than 70% of the levels below. The same applies in the proposed housing overlay district and its standards. The housing overlay standards are somewhat different to account for the R3 neighborhood context, but there are some common aspects there. Uh, an increase in the permitted height to about 41 to 47 feet. Uh, the increase in density that we mentioned, um, adjustments to parking and some, uh, design-type standards to help new development sort of fit into the neighborhood.
Are there guest parking requirements and what's being proposed? Or is it just per unit?
It is just per unit in this instance.
So max two, build by right, no guest parking, 100% lock coverage?
Yes, 100% uh, not taking setback areas into account.
You get to setbacks, but the FIR is build right to that setback, straight up, maybe a little wedding cake top to help the massing.
And there's also some standards, uh, with regard to having sort of flat wall planes. So there's a little bit of.
Some modulation.
And modulation.
Okay. Just, just to also expand on that while we're here, to explain some of the reasoning. When we had the study sessions with Planning Commission, there was an emphasis on prioritizing allowing maximum height to not exceed three or four stories, depending on whether you're in the housing overlay, which is in the R3 Zone, or four stories in the, in the mixed use or the otherwise the commercial zone. So the priority why it was at that time is communicated by the Planning Commission was to prioritize keeping the, the height, maximum height as low as possible. But that required allowing greater build about, build out on the ground, flexing the parking stalls to, to maximize floor area for units as opposed to maybe a fourth or fifth story for greater, you know, open space or, or additional parking stalls. And so it's a little bit of the, the, you know, the, the negotiation that happened during the, the brainstorm or the, the study session to inform these standards was really the driving force was keep building height as low as we can while allowing the density that we have to. Uh, and these are the things that were, that were flexed a little bit. Uh, so just a little bit of a background on that. Okay, so it's a trade-off from the skyscraper to more of a robust, wider, but less. Yeah, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So practically speaking, as part of the proposed amendments, the city zoning map would be amended to identify the overlay districts. And the municipal code would be amended to include two new chapters with the development standards for these, uh, new, um, overlay districts. Um, at this point, I just wanted to point out that there was a typo that I found out as I was preparing for the, for the item tonight. There is a standard regarding unit size and an average, uh, unit size. Uh, and I. an average unit size. And I would just like to, for the record, say that the average unit size for all dwelling units shall be, and there was a missing at least there, 600 square feet. So, just wanted to mention that for the record.
Can I ask one question, too?
Yeah.
On that parking, I hate to go backwards, but you say max of two spaces per unit. Why wouldn't it say minimum of two spaces per unit? Because if they want to build three spaces, they can do that, right?
Oh, yeah. They can, yes.
Why would you say max, then, of two spaces?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I can explain that, sure. The requirement is one space per bedroom.
Yeah, but then it says max of two spaces per unit.
That's right. So, if someone has, for instance, three bedrooms in their unit, we would not require them to have three spaces for the unit.
Yeah, but so then wouldn't you just say a minimum of two spaces?
But they would, but they would be...
Because a max means they can't have three.
No, it's the way it's worded here in this slide, I think, is a little misleading, so I apologize. By max means, the maximum we would require them to have would be two spaces, but they could have more if they propose more.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, the way it's written here in the slide, it can be a little misleading, yeah. So, thank you for...
I just wanted to make sure then the wording is, they can buy, build five parking spaces if they want to, but the minimum requirement is two.
That's correct. Yes, exactly, yeah. With that, I'll just move on to the next slide. And the last part of the program number six that is being addressed in this item tonight is including an incentive for construction of affordable units in these overlay districts. So, if a project provides or proposes a minimum of 20% of the units at either rental or sale rate costs that are affordable to lower-income households, then that project can avoid the discretionary review process and be processed administratively. That was, that's part of the state law, and we're incorporating that into the municipal code. So, each of those new overlay chapters will have a provision regarding this particular topic. With that, that covers our summary of program number six.
Can you go back? I'm sorry, can you go back? What's the potential dwelling units per acre? Sorry.
Yeah, so in the, in the housing overlay district, it will be 65 units per acre, and in the mixed-use overlay, it would be 75 units per acre.
And the current is, okay.
So, if, say they're building 75 units on, they have an acre land, they don't have to have any visitor parking?
Yeah, the requirement would be per-bedroom requirement.
So, there's, we're not, why did you take it away? I mean, I understand, like, the original one was one guest per three units, but now you went to zero, so 75 units. It just seems such a huge, why would you?
It was part of that sort of negotiation that Michael alluded to earlier between the different standards that we make.
I understand, but 75 units without any guest parking just seems a little bit kind of crazy.
Now, this is just in those mixed-use spots?
It is just on those.
This is not, see, I want to close, not just, and the parts in the housing overlay, that's just Wiley Park and a couple spots.
But we don't have, but we don't have parking in Wiley Park area anyway, like, parking is a premium. So, now you're saying you can build a 75 units with no guest parking in an area that's already devoid of extra parking spaces?
If you required additional guest parking at the standards we have now, that four-story building is now eight stories tall. So, it's a question of how do we comply with what the state is requiring us to do? This is all state-mandated density bonus. We have to change our zoning code. How do we balance that with what we think El Segundo should be and what it has been? So, it's not an easy conversation by any stretch of the imagination, but I think if you're, if you're saying we'd rather have smaller buildings, more density, then something's got to give, and at this point, it seems like it's the mandatory parking. Now...
You couldn't have, like, two parkings for every 25 units, or one parking, visitor parking for every 25 units?
You could, but it changes everything else as far as your objective standards that they've laid out.
I see.
Right? And again, it has to be objective. This is a build-by-right, according to the state. Once we overlay this zone, someone buys it, they check all these boxes, they're over the counter, they're getting a permit, they're building, there's no public hearing, it's happening.
I'm just picturing the guy digging into Wiley Park. I want to videotape it.
Yeah, it was one of those hard decisions that we had to make as we went through this whole process, to identify the right standards in order to make that density feasible. Otherwise, if the density is not feasible, then the state would question whether we're really meeting the sort of intent of the...
Just so we get a reference point, Paul, what's the densest property we have in town in terms of units per acre? Do you have any idea what the number would be?
We've, we have some very old sort of complexes that are built at...
Like the end of Imperial where my son lives, that condo building?
Those are very high. I would say, we have complexes in town that are at the 80 unit to the acre.
Okay, so Ball Park, what we're proposing would be the max range here?
The Pacific Coast Commons Project approved a couple of years ago had an average of 84 units to the acre, and that's why it was, you know, several stories tall, about five or six stories tall.
And then, and then the, for the housing, well, for all of them, housing or mixed-use, because mixed-use would include housing, of course. Are we sure grant-deed restrictions aren't an issue on those properties?
Pardon me?
Grant-deed restrictions. Have we done title searches to know that grant-deed restrictions are not issues on those properties?
I...
If we don't have the answer, I'd just, I'd be curious, because I know we have one company in town who's historically had a lot of those.
Right. We, I don't remember specifically. However, we did spend a lot of time analyzing each individual site here, so...
But would that affect how the HCD's potential for approving, if there was a restriction?
It would, and which brings back to, you know, the reason why we have sort of the backup plan of identifying those other areas along Imperial, backside of PCH, and sort of the Franklin Whiting neighborhood.
Okay, we have a safety net built there.
We need to have properties in our back pocket. Now, as Paul mentioned, we went through these properties. Not only did we have to contact the property owners and talk to them about the potential development opportunity that this would pose, and to clarify, this is not approving any housing developments. This is just providing the opportunity for somebody to exercise development opportunities should they want to. But we did have to vet that out with the individual property owners, as well as HCD. We had to go through each property with HCD. But again, they could come back, and if these are not developed in this current housing cycle, we won't be able to reuse them in our next sites inventory, and we need those other properties in our back pocket anyhow. And so, identifying those areas early on during this current cycle was, was, you know, a good foresight on staff's part, and it will be good to have that in our back pocket moving forward, you know?
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Samaras?
Are you done?
If I may, there's a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was done, right?
Start talking.
We did cover all of program number six, so I'll just briefly go over some of the code amendments that we're proposing in your packet tonight. So, let me fast-forward to the next slide on that. So, program number nine has 12 different topic areas where the, we committed to making changes in our municipal code, all with the intent of facilitating housing construction. We're focusing in this item on two of these areas, one, the R3 zone density, and two, the site plan review findings. Today, the R3 zone has two different density standards, depending on the size of the property, with the highest density being 27 dwelling units per acre. The proposed amendment would establish one common density standard in the R3 zone, which would be 30 units to the acre. This is the density that the state considers sufficient to incentivize including affordable units and development projects. So, that's the reason why that number was selected for this. The next amendment has to do with the findings of approval for site plan review applications. HCD specifically asked us to revise the findings of approval, because the language in the code today is relatively vague. So, I have a few examples on the screen for you. So, for instance, in the last finding, there is a reference to a project not adversely affecting the orderly and harmonious developments and the general welfare of the city. So, HCD said, you have to be a little bit more specific with these findings, so there's a little bit more certainty about project approval. So, we made some changes in the ordinance that we have before you, that we believe are more objective language acceptable to HCD. Next, there's one additional zone text amendment that is not part of the housing element programs, but is intended to make the code consistent with recently enacted state law, Senate Bill SB 684. The law in this amendment would allow residential subdivisions, up to 10 lots, ground lots, not condominiums, to be reviewed administratively instead of going through a public hearing process. Again, this is included in this sort of batch of amendments, just so our code is consistent with state law requirements. That covers the summary of the proposed amendments in your packet. Wanted to let you know, staff conducted an environmental review of the proposed amendments and believes that an addendum to the certified EIR for our general plan is the appropriate level of review in this case. Based on the limited scope of the amendments, we don't anticipate substantial or more significant impacts before, beyond what was studied in the general plan EIR. And for that reason, we conclude that the proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan. They directly implement the general plan housing element, programs and goals. The proposed amendments will not have impacts that are different or more significant than the impacts analyzed in the general plan environmental impact report. So, we recommend that you adopt a resolution adopting an addendum for the proposed amendments, approving a general plan amendment for this project, waive first reading, and introduce an ordinance adopting zone change and zone text amendments for this project, and schedule a second reading over the ordinance for your May 7th meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Samaras? Okay, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Per six.
We have to have a public comment first, right?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Do you have any public comments on this matter?
There was one.
No. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Per six, I moved.
Mattel, second.
Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, council discussion.
Quick question. Do the SB 684, is that a condition of HCD's approval of our housing plan, or is that a convenient, let's do them all at once, motion?
It is, yeah. It is not a direct requirement from HCD, but we try to keep our code up to date with current state law. So, that was the reason why we included it in this packet tonight.
Are we fully superseded by state law on that? Is there anything that we can't?
As far as provisions, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Any other council discussion?
No, I'd like to thank staff. I know how much time goes into this, and, you know, when you're dealing with state mandates that are drastically different than what you currently have, it's hard to put that square peg in a round hole. These are tough choices. These are choices that we are required to adopt, and I think we are in a much better place as a city, having an approved housing element going forward than we would be otherwise. So, I am grateful for the time that staff put into this, and I'm happy that we're on the road to getting this approved and being compliant, because that is of paramount importance in today's state of California.
Yeah, and I also would like to echo that and thank Michael and your team, and I also want to thank the Planning Commission, because I know they put a lot of time and effort into that, into this, to ensure that we were, met the standards. So, thank you very much to the Planning Commission.
All right. Looks like we've got consensus to move forward. City Attorney, would you read the resolution by title, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting an addendum to the previously certified EIR for the El Segundo general plan and approving a general plan amendment for the implementation of housing element program number six, provision of adequate sites, and program nine, El Segundo municipal code amendments, environmental assessment number EA 1344, and general plan amendment number GPA 2301 is available for a vote.
Great. Who would like to move approval?
Per six, I move.
Thank you.
Mattel, second.
Okay, Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Would you please read the ordinance by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance approving zone change number ZC 2301, a zone text amendment number ZTA 23-01, implementing housing element program number six, provision of adequate sites, and program number nine, El Segundo municipal code amendments, is available for introduction. I will note that we do want to incorporate the slight modification senior planner Samaras mentioned, and for those keeping score at home, it's on page 284-441, and that would change the text from 600 square feet to at least 600 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this?
Baldino, someone.
Thank you. Baldino introduces, second reading and possible adoption is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on May 7, 2024.
Director Allen, do we think about 60 days thereafter we'll have an approved housing element plan?
Yeah, the item will be second, or introduced for council, second reading, May 7, and so it's formally effective June 7, or 30 days thereafter. We will submit it to HCD beforehand, or they have about a 60 to 90-day review. The letter that they gave us stipulated just one checkbox, rezone, and so I don't anticipate the review taking that long, but we'll definitely keep the council apprised. And once we get certification, we'll let everybody know.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We're on to item 17. This is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding an amendment to the El Segundo South Campus specific plan for vesting tentative tract map number 83236. City Clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Excellent. Has any written communication been received?
No written communication.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. For the pending amendment for your consideration, I'm going to introduce Jasmine, our planning technician, for her first city council presentation. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jasmine.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'll be introducing environmental assessment 1348 for the El Segundo South Campus specific plan amendment for vesting tentative tract map number A3236. So, the site is located at 2100 East El Segundo Boulevard. It is zoned El Segundo South Campus specific plan. It's specifically known as Phase One within the specific plan development, and the site is currently developed with a retail center known as Chargers Commons. The project is not proposing any new development as part of this request. The applicant is proposing a subdivision to divide the lots for financial purposes, and the specific plan amendment before you is required to allow this subdivision to happen. The subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission on March 14 of this year. There's three amendments that are being proposed. The first one is to allow the uses of structures and surface parking lots as a permitted primary use within the Phase One development of the specific plan. The second specific plan amendment is going to modify the setbacks, which will allow the buildings along the structures, for structures with frontage off of the El Segundo Boulevard to be set back a minimum of five feet, and this is for the Phase One area that we're discussing only. The last amendment is going to allow 100% of the required parking to be off-site for this Phase One area only, and through the degradation of CCNRs, it's going to be ensured that the parking lots will continue to service the existing commercial retail center. So, on March 14 of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and after a brief discussion, it was determined that the proposed amendments are not going to interfere with the existing commercial retail center, and the Planning Commission adopted a resolution 2947 recommending that the city council approve the proposed specific plan amendment without any modifications. without any modifications or additional conditions. They also approved the subdivision that we discussed earlier, which is why we're here before you for this specific plan amendment. Specifically, on March 14, the Planning Commission considered the amendments and adopted the resolution affirming that the proposed amendments are consistent with the general plan. Specifically, it's consistent with our economic development objectives, land use element objectives, and the circulation element policy, which seek to create job opportunities and seek balance between growth, local resources, infrastructure, capacity, and the ease of pedestrian access. No nonconformities are going to be created with these amendments, and no detrimental impact on public health, safety, and general welfare will be imposed. As previously mentioned, these minor amendments to the specific plan are necessary in order to accommodate the proposed subdivision. The proposed amendments are not going to change the existing development potential of the project of the site, and they will not change the existing development either. The proposed amendments will not involve any new significant environmental effects or a substantial increase in the severity of the previously identified effects. The proposed amendments will enhance existing development standards for the Phase One area of the Chargers Commons, and the El Segundo South Campus Specific Plan. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, amending certain development standards of the El Segundo South Campus Specific Plan, find that the proposed amendments are minor, that they do not result in any significant impacts, and do not necessitate preparation of a subsequent or supplemental EIR. And we do recommend to schedule a second reading of the ordinance for the May 7, 2024 regular city council meeting. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is presented to answer any questions the mayor and council members may have.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Public hearing is now open for public input. Do we have any public comments? No. Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you very much for your consideration, Lionel Urie with Mar Ventures, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I ask my questions first?
Or we can wait until we close the public hearing.
I can close it. I'll move to close.
Thank you. You have a second?
Per six, I'm moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, council discussion. Mr. Baldino.
Thank you. Lionel? It's not a trick question. You'll be okay. I get the subdivision, right? You want to be able to maybe sell the individual units, but walk me through the parking and the request for 100% off-site. Why is that needed for this property to be fully developed?
Sure. Right now, because it's not allowable use like it is on the rest of the campus, when we subdivide the area, there's a lot that has all the parking on it as common area that serves all the retail center. So because that parking lot doesn't have buildings on it, it becomes the primary use technically is parking, even though there's going to be, there's covenants, CCNRs and restrictions that are recorded, saying that that land can only be used to serve the retail, you know, the retail stores. So it's kind of, I guess, a technicality in this instance that you can't have a lot that just has parking with no building on it unless that's an allowable use for the lot.
Okay.
That's my understanding from staff.
So the way that the lots are laid out, parking itself is a lot. So if you're to subdivide and someone buys a building, that subdivided building doesn't have any parking, but that will use the off-site parking, which is the lot right in front of the building?
Right, it'll have recorded rights that say, you know, like deed restrict, you know, recorded rights in the CCNRs that say that they're, you know, entitled to use X amount of parking spaces for that building in that parking area.
Okay. So we're not envisioning, you know, shuttles or some distant parking lot?
No.
It's all right in that center just because of the layout we have to make this change?
It's all right there, and if hypothetically, if someone wanted to, you know, just buy that parking lot, they couldn't do anything with it because it's restricted by covenant and also by city code to provide parking for the retail centers, setting aside the fact that shuttling people is not restricted. There is a nonpermitted use as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Council discussion. Could that become a parking structure at any point, those lots, if their primary use is of?
I mean, if, one, hypothetically, say, if they wanted to put more parking for the retail component of it, I suppose someone hypothetically could, but they still couldn't do it for, you know, other uses that aren't serving the retail uses.
So no airport parking?
No airport parking.
It's all servicing the development as it's intended?
Correct, yeah.
Any other comments from the council discussion?
No, just so we're clear, that we're moving the setback for the eastern side of El Segundo Boulevard closer? Is that what we're doing?
I think that the issue here is that a couple of the buildings have side yard setbacks that weren't applicable when there was no lots, and they're like, you know, a couple feet too close to each other, so I think that that's what it is addressing, I believe. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other comments? This does not affect the area east of Extended Nash, correct? That's also in the South Pacific, they're the specific plan?
That's correct, Phase One only, which, uh...
Your cane's due.
Is west of Nash and east of Continental. One more. Oh, there you go. Just Phase One.
Any other comments from the council or questions? Okay, City Attorney, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, thank you. An ordinance amending the El Segundo South Campus Specific Plan ESS CSP to modify permitted uses, setback requirements, and development standards regarding parking and loading for Phase One in the ESS CSP area, Environmental Assessment Number EA 1348, and Specific Plan Amendment Number ASP 2301, is available for introduction.
We just need a council member to introduce.
Baldino introduces.
Thank you. Baldino introduce, and it's going to come back May 7 for its second reading. Mayor Protem.
I'll save my questions for the next meeting.
All right, we're done with that item. Thank you very much. Again, that will come back May 7. Item 18, another public hearing. This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing regarding ordinance amending, yes?
I think there was not a vote conducted on that.
No, I thought it was just, we're introducing ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there was, yeah. It was in introduction.
No.
Yeah.
This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing regarding ordinance amending the driveway and curb cut standards in El Segundo Municipal Code Chapter 1515. City clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No written communication.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Mr. Someris.
Mayor, fellow council members, the item before you is an amendment to the municipal code regarding the location and distance between driveways and their curb cuts. Specifically, the applicant in this case is requesting an exception from the minimum distance between curb cuts to reduce it from 24 feet to 10 feet in specific limited circumstances. One, when it deals with non-residential properties. Two, when it's on arterial streets only. Three, when it only involves signalized intersections between those driveways and the street. And four, being subject to the, the design being subject to the community development director and the city engineer to ensure safety. A quick word on the intent behind this separation requirement in the code. It's intended primarily to limit circulation conflicts, you know, from having driveways on the same property that are in close proximity to each other. That is the primary intent. And then especially in residential or smaller commercial areas, to limit the number of curb cuts and have more continuous sidewalks, and preserve on-street parking. That was sort of the general intent for this separation requirement. A little background of how this came up, the reason it came up is a development project that was considered and approved by the Planning Commission this last fall, the Beach Cities Media Campus Project, which includes an office building and a parking structure in the rear. That's the first phase, and there's a potential second phase, a building a little further to the left, closer to the point, if it helps orient you. The point is a little bit further to the left on this screen, and on the right side is the old Arc Light Theaters property. And then in the middle is a central driveway that provides access to the entire site. Keep in mind, Rosecrans is an arterial street, has higher traffic volumes and speeds, and on-street parking is not permitted along Rosecrans. Getting a little closer look at the driveway design for that development, there's two lanes on each side, and it's sort of separated into entry only on one side, exit only on the other side. This particular design that was proposed had an 11-foot separation between those two driveway curb cuts, and included a traffic signal, which was required by the traffic analysis for that particular project. Now, the 11-foot separation was not approved by the Planning Commission when it considered the project, which is why the applicant hopes that with this proposed amendment, to create that exception to the separation requirement, they can kind of use that, their original design, and when they construct the project. Staff and the Planning Commission are in support of this proposed amendment. To allow this exception, because it's a limited exception, it avoids, the signalization avoids any potential circulation conflicts. It is a safe design for pedestrians, that minimum separation of at least 10, 11 feet is sufficient for that purpose. And it's consistent with the general plan because it provides some flexibility in the design of non-residential properties. It offers support to the business community while it still provides sort of a safe design and circulation system. And based on that, staff recommends waiving the first reading and introducing an ordinance to approve this amendment to the driveway and curb cut standards in the municipal code, and schedule a second reading of the ordinance for May 7. And that concludes our presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Someris. All right, public hearing is now open for public input. Do we have anyone that would like to address council on this item? No. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Per six, I'm moved.
Hang on a second.
Sure, second. Thank you, sir. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. All right, council discussion. Keep the graphic up again of the, what this would look like?
This close-up, sir?
Yes.
Great.
He's going to ask for a stop sign instead. Paul, I understand it's a limited exception. Is there any other place in town you think this would actually apply to? Are we talking super limited exception here?
It is limited, it's, it's, it's limited to arterial, arterial streets, so mainly on the east part of town. And this will be applicable to, let's say, larger commercial centers or office centers, where they may need a little extra space for entry and exit for vehicles. So it, it, it will come up, probably. So it's a good solution for those particular situations.
But even in those projects, it'll be reviewed by the development department, correct?
That's right, and the city engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from council? No? All right. We have an ordinance to introduce. Would you please read the title, Mr. Attorney?
Yes. An ordinance amending Section 15-15-5N of the El Segundo Municipal Code Title 15 regarding driveway curb cut standards, and finding such amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel guideline Section 15061B3, is available for introduction.
Who would like to introduce?
Baldino will.
All right, thank you. Coming back May 7 for a second reading. Thank you very much. I know you all have been very busy. Appreciate it. All right, item number 19. This is the Net Promoter Score Survey. We've been doing this, I don't know, five, six years now, something like that. Results of the 2024 Resident and Business Survey Regarding Satisfaction with City Services, and we have Deputy City Manager Barbara Voss.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Barbara Voss. This is our seventh net promoter survey, or community and resident survey. I've been here eight, and this is our seventh, so I've kind of seen the progress of it. Surprisingly similar results year over year, with some things that are outliers that are coming to the forefront, given the circumstances of any given year. So the purpose of the survey, oh, I have this, is defined in our strategic plan. The first goal of our strategic plan is enhance customer service, DEI, and communication. So how do we enhance customer service? We ask our customers how we're doing. We want to engage our customers, which is just the general public, and we want to know from them, year over year, how we're doing on certain specific attributes. In a moment, I'll introduce Diane Shabon, our communications manager, who will go over all of the survey results. But we do use this, and we hope that council will use this information in the strategic planning decisions going forward. What comes out as an area that we need to address? What is the community concerned about? And then as we go into our strategic planning on April 30, we'll have, we'll be having an informed conversation with input from the public. The objectives, we want to determine the overall satisfaction with city services. So that's that net promoter question, which Diane will go into. Assess customer, which is our residents and our businesses, loyalty based on the net promoter score, assess customer satisfaction with multiple attributes. So I just want to mention, year over year, we ask the exact same questions. We haven't changed the questions. The net promoter question never changes, but then the attribute questions, we also keep consistent year over year, so we can really measure over time the feedback that we're receiving. And then we utilize the feedback to improve city services. So with that, I'd like to introduce our communications manager, Diane Shabon, to go over our results. Diane, there you are.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. I'm happy to present this year's net promoter survey. So this year, as we all mentioned, is our seventh year. We conducted the survey between February 15 and March 31, primarily via email, but any emails we didn't have, we mailed to residents, and for the first time this year, we provided printed surveys to the doors of everybody in Park Vista Apartments as well. We had a very good response rate this year compared to last year. We had a response rate of 17.9%, which is a 3.9% increase from last year, which is great. We sent out a little over 300, 3,400 surveys to the residents. 861 were completed, for a rate of 24.8%, with a 4.3% increase from last year. And we sent 4,330 surveys to businesses. 541 completed that with a response rate of 12%. So that's a 3% increase from last year. So in terms of response, we're doing better than last year, for sure. Barbara kind of went into the net promoter survey, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but for those who aren't, it's a common market research tool used to help companies, brands, cities like ourselves, assess the satisfaction or loyalty of their customers, and in our case, residents and businesses. This is determined by asking one question, which is, on a scale of 1 to 10, how likely are you to recommend us to a friend or family member? Promoters are considered people who rate us between 9 and 10. Passive is 7 and 8, and anything below a 6 is considered a detractor. And the score is determined from these answers on a scale of negative 100 to 100, so it's much larger than 0 to 100. And as you can see up here, 70 to 100 is excellent, 30 to 70 is great, 0 to 30 is good, and anything below that is needs improvement. So this is our resident net promoter score for this year. We have a score of 46, which still falls in that grade range. 60% are promoters, which means gives us a 9 or 10 out of 10, and 14% are detractors, which gives us that MPS score of 46. I always like to have a commonplace benchmark, so last year, Amazon's net promoter score was 51, for example, so still in the grade range. Here's our seven-year comparison. As you can see, the line is not going in the direction we want to. However, the good news is, this is all pretty high on the scale of the grade net promoter score, and we'll dive in a little bit more into this. Here you can see the seven-year comparison of promoters versus passives versus detractors, and that blue section along the bottom of all seven years is pretty stable. It's anywhere between 11 and 14%. It's anywhere between 11 and 14%. So what's happening is, our number of passive people is growing. It's not that we have more detractors, it's just some of those 9 to 10 ratings are now 7 to 8 ratings. So primary concerns among our detractors or those giving a lower score are issues related to odor and air quality and overwhelmingly Hyperion. Some mention of Chevron and LAX. And I want to give some context for this. So there, there's a comment section that's optional to list where we can improve. We received 300 comments. 18 of them listed Chevron, 24 listed LAX, and 97 of them listed Hyperion. So a third of those comments mentioned the smell and odors from Hyperion. Other concerns listed are police presence in relation to e-bike and traffic enforcement, crime prevention, and reduction of homelessness. There is a general feeling that there is a great police presence, but these are the issues that community members are concerned about. So it's not a reflection necessarily that there's not enough police around, but these are the issues that they would like to see more enforcement towards, or what they are focused on. Issues related to loss of the city's small-town environment, mentioning rapid growth in the city and hopes to maintain that small-town environment, rising housing and cost of living, and parking issues, which I think we're all very familiar with. We had a lot of really great resident positive comments, and I promise I didn't write any of these. For example, some of them are excellent schools, good services for seniors, vibrant Main Street businesses, plus well-located to beach and major roads. I'm not going to read every single one of these, but love the small-town feel with being too, not, without being too far from large-city convenience, great services, law enforcement schools, rec park activities, library, really listens to the residents, love this city. So again, overwhelmingly, 60% of our survey takers gave us a 9 to 10, which is very high. Then we went on to rank our attributes. So we asked folks on a scale of 1 to 5, how satisfied were they with eight different city services? And this covers everything from rec and park, public library, fire, police, city infrastructure, public works, and overall vision of city council. So these are kind of the meaning of the rankings, very satisfied, neutral, very dissatisfied, and kind of on the scale below. Here's the chart you want to see of our seven-year comparison of our rankings. Now you can see, it's super consistent. All over seven years, pretty much consistently, the top two rated have been fire and police. And everyone's very satisfied with that. For this year, the rank was 4.46 and 4.25. After that, we have maintenance of rec and park facilities at 4.16. Public library services, very steady 4.15. Rec and park programs offered, 4.08, also very steady. City infrastructure, like street sidewalks and public facilities, 3.86. Water and billing services and customer service, 3.85. And responsiveness of city council, 3.47. All of these are very consistent with previous year's ratings. So while the score may, the overall score has changed, the rating of the services has been pretty consistent and pretty good. Again, the city was asked overall to rank the city, and they gave a rate on a 1.5 scale of 3.2, which comes down to neutral or no improvement, about the same. And I show that bar at the top because I think it's important to note that only 18% of people were detractors, like ranked us as slight or significant decline. So that's a very significant portion of folks that felt that we were either neutral or improvement or significant improvement. Now under our businesses. We have a score of 52. We beat Amazon. So 65% promoters, 13% detractors. Again, it's a three-point decrease from last year. This is more of an incremental rise with a little bit of a dip this year, but this line is definitely heading in the right direction. Looking year over year, the past four years have been very consistent in the number of promoters versus passives versus detractors, and we've kind of improved since the beginning a little bit. Primary concerns among the business detractors were the rate of the business license fee increase and the loss of business tax credit. This is from Measure BT, which El Segundo residents voted on in 2022, but it didn't go into effect until January of this year. So it was the first time businesses experienced it, and this was a common item that came up in the survey comments. Police presence, concerns about crime and homelessness in the area, issues related to supporting small business, and issues with the permitting process. Again, lots of positive comments here. Business-friendly, responsive to the needs of its business owners. It is the best city to live and work, good residents, excellent neighborhood, easy to work with, and they make it feel like the city wants us to succeed. City services are very accessible. The city is small enough that it's easy to navigate through any help that you need. El Segundo is clean, safe, and welcoming. Location is excellent. Great news. Again, we did our business attribute rankings for six different attributes, largely community development, economic development, police and fire, and the business license renewal process. Year over year, a little less consistent than the residents, but overall in the past two years, pretty consistent. Always very high ranking is the business license renewal process at 4.33. Notably, this is the only score that dropped this year, although it is still very satisfied and a very high ranking from the previous year. Fire, 4.15. Police Department, 4.14. Community development has had a steady climb, and this is their highest ranking this year at 3.98. Business development and policies at 3.87, and city zoning policies at 3.79. So all of those are almost the same or a little bit better than the previous year. So based on the 1.5 scale, businesses gave us an overall score of 3.56, which means that the city has made some improvement over the past year. And again, in terms of listing as a decline, only 7% of businesses put us in, in slight or significant decline. So that's 93% that believe we're either neutral or above. So overall, both of the MPS scores decreased by three points, still a great rating. The business license renewal process and responsiveness, knowledge, and competency of fire and paramedic services remain to be the highest-scoring attributes for businesses and residents, both. Supporting local small businesses, the new business license tax fees and public safety are concerns for the business community. Air quality, overwhelmingly Hyperion, and public safety are driving concerns for residents. Overall, businesses felt that the city had some improvement over the last year while residents were neutral and ranked the city as no improvement or about the same. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Nailed it.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. And I think it's really good to see the trends in, yeah. I think, I'm thankful that we're continuing to do this so that we can see trends over time. I was going to ask Daryl, can we use that information from the net promoter score for the residents as leverage to Hyperion and let them know that, you know, overwhelmingly the response was about Hyperion? Because I know one of the things, we just never had data from our residents other than individuals calling. Now we have a collective voice from the residents, and I think we need to leverage that.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I echo that? I think that is, that's a great point, because we looked at, you know, we talked about litigation. One of the key things was, we didn't really have an ability to assess a damage. You know, it's not really difficult to assess a damage to science. I mean, obviously, this would be a flight of judicial creativity, but the fact that we have data points that measure people's satisfaction from living here, and we can see a 10% change over time
Right.
from when the event occurred to what we're seeing now. It's an interesting piece. Now, I don't know that we can assign a dollar value to that, but in terms of like, look, a quality of life, the, the outlying event in this is a 10% change based, only one thing we can tie it to is an environmental event from our neighbors. That's, that's a significant piece of it. And I used to take this thing a little bit as a grain of salt, because who answers their surveys? But the fact is that once you get a very consistent number of people responding and a consistent number of, of, or at least within a certain progression of what people are answering to, you can certainly see that effect.
Great job. I applaud that we're still doing this after seven years, and we were one of the first government agencies to do it. We're still in rare company doing something like this. Most governments don't do this, don't probably frankly care what their residents or businesses think. They're just doing business as usual. So a little discouraged by the results, just means we have more room for improvement, but it's still a good score. And when we look to government, the few governments that actually do a net promoter score in the past as a benchmark, I know that number is really low, much lower than ours. So the fact that we're in, I know my business is run 89, so maybe that's something to strive for, because we measure this very closely every single month for the last 17 years, but we're still doing great. We have some room for improvement, but it's, I think it's good. And I'm glad we're still focused on this effort. And hopefully, we take those qualitative comments, more importantly, serve them up to Hyperion. But I think the key to a survey is demonstrating that you heard. Like, when we do our employee engagement survey in my businesses, the most important thing is not that you do the survey, not that you saw the results, it's that you share the results with the people that are taking the time to fill out the survey. So I think we have to do a better job. When you look at responsiveness and overall vision of city council, what I would like, and I know you're new in this role, Diane, like, and you're doing a great job, I would like to see us find better ways through different mediums to get the word out to the residents that we heard them and that we're focused on it, and as a direct result of the survey, because I think that'll show up in next year, and that's what people want. They want to know they were heard.
Yeah, and that actually goes back to the point, and I was going to ask how we're going to communicate the results out to the public, but it goes back to the point, and I've brought this before, is, you know, we have that fix-it button on our website. Are we communicating out to people what the turnaround time is? Hey, you know, like, let's push out our successes. And we heard you, and just share all of our successes. We heard you, here's what's happening. And I know you laugh about that fix-it button.
I want my map back.
So just a couple of things on that. We do incorporate our, well, first of all, we take the written results and we share them with the appropriate department, so they get that feedback. If there's something that's actionable, then we do have the contact of the person who filled out the survey, and we will reach out to them. Especially in Econ Dev, we do contact the businesses that said, you know, they had some sort of concern with the city. So we do reach out. And then we have a "we heard you" segment that we put in our newsletter that we send out to the public, and we give highlights on, you know, this was, this was something that came up in our community survey, and this is what we're doing about it. So we keep, we do try to keep bringing that to the attention of the public, that this was brought up in our survey, remember that survey you did, and here's the things that we're doing. So we do try to consistently, over time, address the issues that are brought up in the surveys as best we can.
And then on the fix-it button, are we, are we pushing that information out that we're resolving those fixes?
So our fix-it button is getting fixed. So we have, you know, the reported issue, it's on the website, on the homepage, one click to report some kind of, any kind of issue. What we've discovered with our reporting issue is that it doesn't have that metrics feature that we want. Ultimately, with our strategic planning and our metrics that we're collecting from, report it or something similar, we want to have some sort of dashboard that's publicly available, that's just on the website, kind of a how we're doing, here's our strategic goals, here's some of the issues that have come up, here's where the complaints are clustered. So we are, we are in the process, we've interviewed three firms. It's going to be just almost net neutral in cost to switch from our current Granicus provider to another provider that has a very detailed metrics, pretty colors, very easy to understand dashboard, so that we can start sharing that with the public.
With the map?
With the map and pinpoints.
Right, the nice part with the map, though, is you could see the pins before, and you could highlight, you could hover over and see when the last time somebody looked at the pin and what color the pin was and all the magic pins.
And you can also see if somebody already reported what you're concerned about.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. This is a file and receive, I believe, receive and file.
Correct.
One of those.
Can I, can I touch on one piece of the messaging? And I think it's important, just in light of today, when Mr. Johnson was up here, you know, there's someone who, who I think that policing and crime was probably ambient, but not on his radar until he became a victim. And then we are sort of retroactively explaining like, hey, we've added 10 officers to our quota, we've added a beat, and all of these things, those are things that ideally our community members, on the business side certainly, they seem to be lagging the most in understanding the improvements we've made there, but understanding some of the initiatives we have around that, that just speaks to the communication piece. And chief, you can see where, where some of the, some of the deficiency is in communication from the officers we have out there as well.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Good, okay, thank you. Next up, item 20, ordinance adopting a 2022 edition of California Fire Code with certain appendices and amendments and resolution-making supporting findings. Chief Avery to present.
Thank you, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members. And I'm here to read the code, Fire Code amendments that we want to adopt, and then I will turn it over to the city attorney's office if it's okay with you for procedural. The summary of the Fire Code amendment updates that we are recommending are seven. The first one being Appendix B, used to calculated, calculate needed water flow from a fire hydrant to extinguish a fire in a building. Appendix C, used to determine the acceptable distances between fire hydrants. Appendix O, provide specific code requirements for haunted houses, ghost walks, and similar amusements, uses that are not found in the base Fire Code. Section 503 allows us to enforce requirements for fire access roads that are specific to the needs of our city and the fire apparatus that drives on that, on those roads. Section 510.3 allows us to require permit to install an emergency responder communication coverage system, so we can ensure the system is designed for the city of El Segundo. Section 808.5 allows us to require permit for someone to install a new play structure, climbing frames with foam blocks, plastic sides, et cetera, in an existing building. Section 1103.2, connected to section 510.3, allows us to require installation of an emergency responder communication system in an existing building where we find our radios no longer work. That's the end of the amendments. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief before we go into official business?
I just have a question, because it's adopting the 2022, it's 2024.
It's a triennial, so every three years, the code is updated.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Turner, just to frame this a little, little differently, so we have previously adopted the Fire Code with certain amendments. The specific additional appendices and sections that Chief Avery had mentioned have to be specifically added to our previously adopted. So we're opting into our ability to enforce those, and we have to do that through this particular song and dance. I will note, there is the unusual procedure where, when we adopt another code by adoption, here, the Fire Code, it's backwards in the sense that we do the public hearing with the second reading, whereas with a lot of ordinances, we do the public hearing on the front end. So I just wanted to note that nuance, if you notice how that's arranged here.
And none of this is discretionary, right? We're complying with state law?
Yeah.
If I have an angry business owner who says, I just put in a foam pit for my trapeze, why does the city care? We don't have to say it's because we care, it's the state that really cares about your indoor trapeze foam pit.
But it's also our discretion in the sense that, to the extent we want to, from the array of various options of additional enforcement that we can add to our, our menu, these are particular ones that the fire department has said that are relevant and they want to opt into having the ability to enforce.
And if I may?
Please do.
Every city is unique, and so every city that I've served has unique qualities and requirements for the safety of their community. So that, by adopting these particular amendments, we could provide additional safety measures for, for our community.
But we don't have the option to not require permitting for indoor foam playgrounds in existing structures?
We...
Or do we have the option to be like, we don't care if you have an existing play structure?
Exactly. If we want to have the ability to enforce it, which we do not currently have, then we could just leave it be. But if I was identified, here's a, here are seven amendments that we currently lack the ability to enforce, that we want to add to our enforcement ability under the Fire Code, and we have to proactively include those, include those in, so...
I'm making somewhat light, obviously, of the playground, but are there obstructed roads that we currently don't have access to for fire access?
Yes, so according to the code today, did not adopt section 503. So if a developer came in and said, hey, I want 10-foot or 7-foot wide roads, there's nothing that we have in our power to enforce our requirement of 20-foot accessways. By adopting this, we have the latitude now to enforce that requirement that is standard across the state.
And I will draw a distinction, just conceptually, between sort of the bulk of the Fire Code that's set forth in sections, and then there are specific sections that are excluded from that adoption. So in addition to those specific sections that are excluded, whereas if a city adopts it, they can enforce it, even though it's in the body of the code... Even though it's in the body of the code, there are also appendices that we're adopting that are similarly situated in that. We can't enforce it unless we specifically say, in addition to adopting the California Fire Code. We want to additionally enforce these additional sections. So we've had the ability to, uh, enforce the, the sort of bulk of the code. But there are specific tailored options that we have to proactively opt into, which we are doing here with these seven, um, amendments.
I mean, right, it's, it's fire codes. I've been, I think most of us are far out of our depth. Uh, but I think in the spirit of some of the things we don't want to overburden if there's excess permitting that, that. I mean, if it's your sense of expertise that, that these things have to be permitted, uh, I would, I mean, I think we're probably going to defer to that. But, but some of these I can imagine if you are rehabbing a building in some of our legacy sites. And you wouldn't see this coming if there's an extraordinary series of permits that say, hey, I know this is a Faraday cage, uh, that you're rehabbing this building. And now you have to put internal communication systems to be redundant to a fire service. That's something that, that I think probably some of the people who are redoing buildings around here would not have foreseen. I don't know what the permit cost of that is. Probably I imagine somewhat trivial from the cost of redoing a building. But, uh, for redundant communication, do we know what that, that might typically add to a building? Is that a $10,000 add, 20,000?
It depends on the size of the structure because you have repeaters within the structure itself, such as a high-rise building. If they change the occupancy or the construction within the, the high-rise itself, um, that cost could be astronomical. I'm not sure. But the point is that we're adopting these particular codes so that we have the ability to ensure our community is safe. And give us that enforcement power. But to your point, I will look at every single issue that comes across my desk. And make sure that it's in line with the rest of the state.
Again, I'm, I'm out of my depth, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to delay this any longer. But I think that in the spirit of, of not, I would urge you in the spirit of not burdening because we can regulate does not mean we necessarily have to regulate. Uh, you know, let's be judicious in the way that we enforce some of these in the spirit of providing a safe place, but a place where people also want to come in and use our spots. So, uh, I will yield.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments? All right. So we've got a ordinance that requires reading. First thing I guess we could do is we could set a public hearing and second reading the ordinance for May seventh, twenty twenty-four. And then we'll read the ordinance, if you could read the ordinance.
Sure. An ordinance adopting the twenty-two edition of part nine of title twenty-four of the California Code of Regulations. Fire code with certain additional appendices and amendments is available for introduction.
Who would like to introduce? Baldino, once again. Thank you, sir. All right. Now we have a resolution. If you could read the title, resolution by title only, please.
A resolution making express findings and determinations supporting city modifications to the California Building Standards Code because of local climatic geological or topographical conditions is available for a vote.
All right. Who would like to move approval?
You've been on a roll, Ryan, but I'll go, I'll go with this one. I will.
All right. Drew in the first.
Percy on the second.
Percy on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. All right. Thank you. I think it's, it's good, Mayor Pro Tem, I think it's good. I like where you're headed though, because, um, having dealt with some founders and entrepreneurs that were, they're coming to town here and getting into a building and trying to figure out the facilities is not their forte and expertise. And it's really secondary to what they're trying to accomplish, their mission at hand. And some of these guys are under a lot of, guys and gals are under a lot of pressure, have raised a lot of money. And in some cases, the buildings that they go into might not meet our requirements, but that's not necessarily the founder of the entrepreneur's fault. And so how do we help them? And chief, you've been great. And Michael Allen, you've been incredible working with these, uh, companies to get them over the finish line on this. But I think you have a point, Chris, which is to really understand the impact that these things roll out because it's all additive. We're never going backwards in California. These code requirements, we never delete them. We never delete laws. We don't delete regulations. It's all accretive, all this. And I think it's important we understand it. So philosophically, I agree with the direction you're coming from.
When we first redid the Smokey Hollow specific plan, we had someone who said, get in front of us and say, I could not open my concept. My, my Stickenstein sort of concept place because your, uh, regulations don't allow for more than two pool tables. And so they walked away and set it up at Torrance. And I realized that's when I sort of got on my palm reader and pawn shop kick. Of the things we regulate in eighty years from now, somebody will be looking at their fees and be like, we have a indoor foam pit and a building permit fee. Bewildered, so.
Yes, thank you. All right. We've, we accomplished item twenty-one. We're on to reports. City clerk, anything to report this evening?
Nothing to report.
All right. City treasurer is not here. Uh, Councilmember Baldino.
Um, yeah, uh, this week I'm grateful for the Kualanians for hosting the second annual Chili Palooza. It was nice to see the community come together and, uh, you never see people get closer until torrential downpour happens during the middle of an event. But it was, uh, well attended, uh, and, uh, I thank them for all their good work.
Thank you. It was great seeing you there. Councilmember Perry.
Nothing from me this evening.
Thank Councilmember Percy.
Yeah, I just have, um, I would like to ask the, if the, if there's an interest from the council to look at two things. One would be the parking lot on the four hundred block of Main Street that we own between Fantastic and El Gringo. There's that piece of land that we own that property. And, um, I know we are looking at there, we've, we've kind of talked about maybe doing a a parking structure at the fire station here on, on Grand, but we don't have the funding to do that. So if we did look to sell that property, that may give us the money we need. Very would give us the money we need to build a parking structure and maybe even, um, some extra money that we want to look at. Maybe adding more parking, a slight parking structure on Main and Mariposa. So that's just, I'm throwing that out, but more, more specifically on Grand and Main where the fire station parking is. But it's a definitely a, a piece of land that we own and I don't know if a lot of people know that we own that land and it's public parking. But it's really used by just two or three businesses there. So I just, I, I'm, I'd like it to be part of the downtown specific plan or have a conversation about it. I just would like to put it out there. Um, the second thing is I'd like to instruct the city to reach out to the city, the LA County Health Department. During the pandemic, it came to our, um, attention that we are zone eight. Did we say eight? Eight or thirteen? Five, what? Spy eight. And what came out on that was when we had a conversation with them. We asked them, do they, how do they communicate to the city? And they say, oh, we are in constant contact with the city, but no one from the city had actually talked to them. And I know there's a lot of resources there that are supposed to be helping our area. And I just don't think since the pandemic, we've had, had any contact with them. So I'd really like to understand what their role is and how they support the city. And to make sure that they're aligned to their, their services are aligned to our, our city's needs, specifically age and place. Um, so I'd like the city to look into reaching that out. And I know there was some discussion about moving away from LA County Health and maybe combining, uh, about with the South Bay. Um, coming, coming together and creating our own department, uh, our own health department, um, for specific things. So I just want to have that conversation, make sure that we're, it doesn't go under the covers again for twenty more years until another pandemic happens. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Percy. One quick note on the, uh, South Bay council governments during the pandemic looked at, did a study on going independent. And I forget the numbers, but they were staggering numbers in terms of standing up our own division outside of that. But there's a lot of momentum to do that still.
Well, it's just, and what we found out was on that spy eight, there's three hundred employees or three hundred and thirty employees that are supposed to be servicing the South Bay area and no one had ever heard from them. So I just want to understand what their role is, especially now that the pandemic's over. And maybe we can put some, be a little more proactive and enhancing communication. And that's where I really want to hear, uh, get the communication process flow from the Hyperion. Because that, that department is supposed to be part of that loop. And we don't ever seem to hear from them and it's important that our residents understand their role. Um, our taxes are paying for that, that department, LA County Health Department. And we need to understand what they're doing and how they're supporting us.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tem, Pimentel.
Uh, I would echo Councilmember Perry's stick on that. I think without the pressure cooker of the pandemic, where I think the public health felt like they were under siege, I think that they're probably more likely to engage with us. Uh, they appeared at the homelessness meeting the other day, which was, you know, hey, that's what you look like. On our end, on the, I'll start with some of the infrastructure stuff. We've got a complete review of Measure R projects coming up in the next two months, transportation. Those are some really big ticket items. I mean, those are a hundred million dollar projects that, that we're sort of making. Uh, I shouldn't say making, we're asking cities to defend some of their lagging projects, projects that have been on, on the, on the cog allocation for six, seven years that have not made progress. Don't feel bad. I beat up on those two. A three million dollar, three and a half million dollar turn lane that hasn't been built that I'm jumping up and down about. Uh, the local travel network, there is a capacity issue and city manager, you'll hear me yap about this a little bit. Uh, we can't get golf carts down to PCH as part of that, excuse me, down to, to Vista Del Mar as part of that leg of it. Because that road is technically forty miles an hour once you go over the hill. Uh, we can't change that speed limit because when they close the barricades to the beach parking. They don't believe there's enough room to make a U-turn with a golf cart should it be in over its head. Uh, and for that reason, the attorneys for the county will not authorize them to lower the speed limit from forty to thirty-five, which will allow our golf carts to go down there legally. Um, they won't return my phone calls. Maybe they'll return yours. Um, I want to encourage him that we can find a way for golf carts to turn around. Uh, it is municipal hijinks at its greatest. We saw a fascinating proposal from, there's federal funding, uh, that is applicable to us for, to turn rail beds, unused rail beds into parks. They've done it so far in a ring around Atlanta. They've done it on one bed, rail bed up, uh, between Oakland and Emeryville. Um, and so when we have our El Segundo Economic Development Corporation looking at ways to achieve their Greenway funding, that is federal funding that does exactly that. And they've been sniffing around for a pilot project. So we connected them with that after the cog transportation meeting. Uh, that is a possible way forward there. Sanitation is still, uh, on the county side is still looking at what the fees will look like over the next four years. Uh, it is going to be troublesome for some of our large, um, large business users as they catch up. Much like some of the things that we fell into here, we hadn't, had not adjusted rates in a number of years. They have a series of capital improvements. Both they and LA city sanitation are applying for enormous Infrastructure Act funding to do water rehabilitation projects. So those are both competing two to three, four billion dollar projects. Uh, but the concept of that for both would be to recycle close to two hundred million gallons per day of water. Uh, and for reference, that's five times what we're currently doing out of Hyperion. Uh, of that, we have change of command coming up at the base. Colonel Nicely, who led the tour that some of the council members got to go to, the LA Air Force Base, has an amazing new job. Uh, which is dual-use commercial satellite implementation. So it's a gigantic Department of Defense piece based here in El Segundo. Uh, so that should promise to, to support our innovation in space ecosystem and, uh, Chargers draft next weekend. Oh, well, but they'll be hosting it at, at, not at the facility yet, as was the plan, but yeah, at, at Topgolf, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. A lot of activity in El Segundo recently on the entrepreneurial front. We've had a couple of reporters come through representing Forbes and the Information. Did a couple of tours with, uh, reporters around town, introducing them to all the activity. There were two hackathons. I think we've talked about one, but that brought a lot of exposure to the city. Those were very well attended, not just by founders, but also by entrepreneurs. Last week, uh, Chris and I did a tour with Jeff Wilson at Chevron with about fifteen entrepreneurs. Cause they love the industrial nature of Chevron and the refining process. Couple of them are in that industry. And, uh, it was just fascinating. Uh, they're working on really cool things. Uh, robots killing fish more humanely and with better quality fish. Guy just moved here from New York, drove his Bronco, Henry Quan, across the country when he saw all the activity on X. Going to buzz about El Segundo, literally just pulled up shop, moved his business here. There's another story just like that. So we've had a, we've got a ton of momentum. It's really exciting to see. I met with Holly Mitchell two weeks ago to talk about Hyperion and other things. It was a good meeting. Um, and, uh, she mentioned, I, I mentioned this to you, Daryl, and maybe you know about this, Hakeem. But apparently there's new legislation that allows cities to enforce retention for individuals that are homeless or have substance abuse, substance abuse issues to a greater degree than we've had in the past. And so, um, I didn't have the, the, the exact language or the, the law, or, or maybe it was a judicial order. I'm not sure, but.
She referring to the.
Yeah, maybe it's that, but we, no one's aware of it. Like I talked to, you know, chiefs aren't really aware. So how is that going to actually show up? And from her, from the supervisor's perspective, she's like, this is a game changer for us. We can actually institutionalize people if they need help. It doesn't have to just be, uh, danger to themselves or others. And so this, this is a game changer for us if this is in fact able to be something we can practically roll out. So if we could get a briefing on that for the next meeting, that'd be really good. Council of government, general assembly was great. Um, Congressman Ted Lee was there. I missed his part at a meeting. But there was a lot of presentations, there were several presentations on AI, including I think Ted's. And so I learned a lot, uh, about AI, not just how other cities are using AI, but businesses, we've already incorporated in our businesses. But there's major opportunity for cities to disrupt the way they're doing things. I've also supervisor Mitchell mentioned a book to me called Recoding America. I just read that. That's a woman who was a technologist under the Obama administration who came in to fix Obamacare when the platform failed. She also went in to fix many other programs. She's a Silicon Valley trained technologist. It's a fascinating read. I'm going to get you the book, Jose, because I learned a lot. And it just emphasized how broken government is in so many regards, even at the local level. I'm just being honest. There's so much opportunity for improvement. Related to AI, it was really cool. Is it the kickoff that Ryan mentioned and the winner? How did she make her chili? How did she win? Chat GPT. Give me the award-winning chili recipe for a kickoff in this town. Won last year using Chat GPT. This year she said, take the same recipe, same prompt, add bacon. Won this year definitively too. So if we don't think Chat GPT, you know, works, I think it's a funny example. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to city attorney.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City manager. I also have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you. All right. We are done. Thank you all. We're adjourned.